Okay, I'll be right back on in about a couple of minutes.
Okay, we are live.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
My birthday.
Your birthday. She used to live in Chicago, didn't she?
Yeah, last Thursday.
Happy birthday to you, Miss Johnson. Birthday's good for us.
So good.
One thing I was worth saying. I just keep it very. I don't know how to tell you. We had brunch yesterday with Julie and Matt and their two daughters. And we went out.
Current stuff.
We went last night to Charis. Wendy's and they had just.
A run that old stuff to Fred. But I'm good.
You just make some counter blessings. Yep, we, yeah, we're very fortunate. Yes, we do.
They're not.
Well, we have nice.
Got to take it to indicate that.
Fans here tomorrow. John and mother with his younger daughter. And pizza and salad and dessert. It was an interesting afternoon.
That's very nice.
Interesting piece of news.
I should might well.
Now, the older of us in Chicago.
For us to say.
Vegas.
This is why.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, she is a girl. Good for her.
Yeah.
We all, we all need friends. We all need all the friends we can get.
Yep.
Had a world change.
You read that anyway? She was about sixteen, huh?
I was such a parent. Adult, adult, significant, it's me. Well, I remember.
Right, yes. Girl.
How many men do you play?
So good.
And you want to give her a search shot?
Well, he was so petrified to tell me that he's good.
Of course, I know for years. Sometimes it's just obvious, you know?
Yeah.
But, but he was sitting there, started going like.
Yeah.
Well, but it's so interesting because today. He gives a shit. Happy for you. And he was a great guy, asked my questions. He was a great wonder. He was obsessed, man. And lastly, I got married.
Every sizes.
He was my real, he was my mentor. And I wonder if I can.
I'm on the way back.
Really good. Really good trial lawyer.
There's a brain there.
Yeah.
It's the one who was came over from Indiana. Today, Jalen.
Of the end.
He's in the final stages of the divorce.
Right.
He said. Don, I was given a list of more things that I was not allowed to talk about.
That was one of them. Yeah, Reggie.
Hey, Don, I don't know if everybody saw us, but the Supreme Court ruled against us on zoning issue. So I'm gonna send out an email to all residents tonight.
I thought that we could have August.
Yeah. Yeah, Don, they're closing in. Sandra, I don't know if I told you earlier, but the Supreme Court ruled against us on the zoning issue.
Did we get the, are you gonna send this out so we can?
I've sent an email to the council. We're gonna send out an email to all the residents tonight. I don't have it actually. I just got it noticed from our attorneys.
I'd love to read the mistake.
Well, it's two sentences. There's Michelle, but yeah, no discussion. Michelle Keller decided she would have branded discretionary reviews.
Yeah.
No, I mean, even beyond, even beyond.
Oh, no, she's.
Even beyond that, she's very good.
She's good.
Very bright.
She's very, very bright.
What a really good person.
Okay.
I'm small people, I think. More head scum. Oh, good, they came. Hey, Tony. Well. The Arkansas.
The interns that you're here and no enter. He was one hit batsman away from a perfect game. Weird style of that. Neither strikeouts, they get like in tryouts. That's, that's.
That's a danger. That's a big number.
Oh, good.
Where's her? He's in Nashville. You're saying such, you know, that probably has nothing else. Don't be called, we did anything. In the returns.
Sleepy.
I'm the attorney. But not the city attorney. It was.
I really need this as a. Yes, we saw.
You're against this, that or if we were to.
You have to look at it.
Logic. Logic.
So I'm going to. Just the correct. He was.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Doug Farnsley. This is Monday, June 16, 2025. Time is seven PM. I'm the mayor of the city of Prospect. Welcome to Prospect City Hall for this regular meeting of the city council. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Two corrections have been pointed out to me, and that is you need to correct. It says participating remotely was director of public work Ron Kind of. Mr. Kind of was actually not participating either in person or remotely, so we'll delete that one. Then there's a, there's a typo in the section of citizen comments. This sentence should have read, they questioned why the police department's response did not include a pursuit of the individuals involved. That's the way it should have read. Men has been corrected to note that. With that said, are there any additions, corrections, or comments regarding the minutes as distributed? Remove approval as corrected.
Second.
We need further discussion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Thank, thank you. Christians, are there any votes against? Okay, the minutes stand approved. Next item on the agenda is comments from citizens. I don't think anyone signed up to comment, but if anyone has something they want to say, I'll recognize them and they can speak up. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. So I will make my report. I delivered my budget address at the June two special council meeting. My mayor's report this evening will include updated remarks regarding the budget proposed for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Based on advice provided by city attorney Chris Gorman, the budget is before the council this evening for a first reading. If the council approves the budget, I will call a special meeting for a second reading. This evening, I will also introduce four more head pain scholars from the University of North Carolina, who are working with us this summer and who are present this evening. And they are, let's see if I can get this right. This is always a challenge. Elise Chang. Misha. Last name, Misha. Okay, Luquissa and Marielle Ottinger and Sria Ammoni. So thank you all for being here and for being here this summer. I've said to them, and I said to the president of the Morehead Foundation, Moriah Payne Foundation, that they are a breath of fresh air. We really are pleased that you all are here in Prospect and that you're here this evening. I'll also provide an update on the proceedings in the Kentucky Supreme Court related to the LDG zoning change. Finally, I will comment on recent and upcoming events in Prospect. First, I will address the budget that is before the council. The city of Prospect remains on a sound financial footing. Our audit shows that we ended last fiscal year with a $150,000 surplus. As of June one, we have just under $4 million in cash on hand. The changes of note in the, in the proposed budget, the current budget are as follows. First, we project an $80,000 increase in property tax receipts. This increase comes from new construction in the Breakers and in Hunting Green and from a change in our tax rate. Our current tax rate was 17.4 cents for $100 of assessed value. The state's compensating rate, which seeks to keep revenues flat, is 17.6 cents per $100. The rate we are proposing for your consideration is 18.3 cents per $100. The practical effect of this change is that a homeowner who lives in a house with an appraised value of $500,000 will pay $45 more in the coming fiscal year. A homeowner who lives in a $1 million house will pay an additional $90. Additional funds that will be generated by this increase will be used to fund a 3% cost of living adjustment for various city employees and actual pay increases above the cost of living for other employees, as I will discuss further. Additional funds will be set aside to help fund substantial improvements to US 42. 80% of the cost of improvements to US 42 will be paid by the state of Kentucky. Those improvements will require a 20% match by the city. As noted, funds generated by the change in the property tax rate will help fund that match. An additional capital improvement is a new boardwalk that will extend from the back of City Hall to Putney Pond. The changes on the expense side reflect a 3% cost of living adjustment, adjustment increase in the salaries of our non-police employees and of our full-time police officers. Pursuant to state law, the proposed cost of living adjustment for the mayor is capped at 2.9%. This budget proposes a real increase, not simply a cost of living adjustment in the proposed salaries for our part-time police officers and for our police chief and assistant chief. The change in compensation for our part-time, part-time officers would make their hourly pay the same as the hourly pay for our full-time officers. We can accomplish this by increasing the pay to our part-time officers by 10% over what we are currently paying them. I based the changes in the proposed compensation for our chief and assistant chief in part on the salaries paid to chiefs and assistant chiefs in nearby local police departments. Our chief and assistant chief receive substantially lower pay than their counterparts in all of the listed departments, including notably the police chief and assistant chief for the city of Indian Hills. Based on my review of that information, I propose that we increase our chief's pay by 9% and our assistant chief's pay by 11%. With those increases in place, our chief and assistant chief will still receive the lowest salaries of nearby local departments, including Indian Hills. After our June two council meeting, we received from our engineer a list of streets he recommends that we consider repaving and the projected cost for that paving work. We have adjusted the paving number in the workbook accordingly. We also received an estimate on replacing six updated computer workstations in City Hall, which created a new expense item of approximately $12,000. One year ago, we had two vacancies in the ranks of our full-time officers. Because of that, we could not provide police protection to our citizens on a 24/7 basis. In adopting the 2024 budget, the council took bold action, substantially increasing pay for our full-time officers. This led to the city being able to add two superb officers. For approximately the last eight months, we once again have a full complement of officers and we again provide police coverage 24/7. That concludes the budget message part of this of the mayor's report. I will now, now turn to other matters. This afternoon, Prospect's lawyers advised that the Kentucky Supreme Court made its decision on Prospect's appeal of the zoning change that had been approved by Metro Council and that permitted LDG apartment, the LDG apartment project on Timber Ridge Drive to move forward. Unfortunately, the Supreme Court ruled against Prospect and the zoning change will stand. This brings the zoning question to a close. While this decision is disappointing, it is not surprising to me or to our lawyers. LDG's separate lawsuit against the city of Prospect is ongoing. The case had been scheduled for trial in mid-July. However, the judge postponed, postponed the trial date and we expect a new date will be selected soon. On a more positive note, on June 8, approximately 150 people assembled at the John Evans Pavilion to enjoy music performed by the Ron Jones Quartet. Four superb musicians entertained those of us in attendance on a lovely early summer evening. The current summer pop-up art exhibition here in the council room will continue through August 22. I extend the city's thanks to Kathy Sauer, Becky Culberth, and all the members of the Art Committee for their efforts. Prospect's second Kids Fest had been scheduled to take place on Saturday, June 14. Because of concerns about the rainy weather, Kids Fest has been rescheduled to a date in October. Sally Schneider and David Holmes have taken the lead in organizing Kids Fest, so I extend my thanks to them and to others who have assisted. This concludes my report. The next item on the agenda is the financial report. John?
I'm summarizing May's financials. I'll begin with the Kentucky KLC investments, of which we have roughly $3.5 million invested in three different funds and our checking totaled around $260,000 on, at the end of May. So we have on hand roughly $3.9 million, almost $4 million actually. And once we remove our pension obligation and our restricted funds, that remains about $2.4 million unrestricted balance. We've now earned over 100% of the budgeted revenue. We're about 103%. And that was at the end of May, and we've spent about 90% of our expenditures by the end of May. The restricted road aid fund currently has a balance of 100. Just remembered, this is not right. Hundred and third, about $140,000. And the capital project fund is at 97,766. And I believe that covers it unless you have any questions.
Any questions for John?
You have enough cash to cover the expenses for the rest of this year.
Yes.
To draw down.
A woman.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, John. Next, we'll turn to commission and board reports. I'm not sure we have a report from.
Connie Kuhn was gonna have a forestation.
Connie Kuhn, you're gonna give us a forestation report? Wonderful, thank you for being here.
I've been speaking this long today.
It'll be great.
Our station that last Thursday, ideas from the campaign were discussed, including a newsletter with success stories featuring program participants, with trees being in leaf again, time being spent reviewing previous hazardous tree cases for current conditions. A number of new cases were presented in the meeting and all of both private and public land. We continue to address resident inquiries that we did. We will participate in the Board of July Fest, and these will more members in free information bill, and Hope Parks and Recreation will again join us. Our board is looking for a few good men. Actually, one of the fifth general to join us on our planet. We would really like to have someone from the landings.
And we do have a prospect in the landings. I'll, I'll reach out to her.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other reports, Jefferson County League of Cities, Sandra.
We have not had a meeting since June 2, where I gave you a long thing of what was going on. But essentially, June 19 is VAS night for JCLC, and it's usually a very fun event, and a lot of people from Prospect are going to be there. There'll be no board meeting in July and no member meeting in July. And I would encourage a lot of you to think about coming to the member meetings. Over the course of the years, I've learned a great deal at them. And the ones particularly for me, where they stopped talking about the legislation passed, were some of the projects that are being done are very helpful. In August, there will be a board meeting, but there will be no member meeting. So the next member meeting will be in September. And again, Don Gibson is very nice in our project to take a look at rural cities, what how we're the same and how we're different is well underway. We're starting, and we still need just one more volunteer, if you hear anybody who's like that office.
Thank you, Sandra. Any questions for Sandra? Don, thank you also for the League of Cities. Appreciate it. Thank you. So I don't know that we have a parks report. I know the Parks Committee did not meet this, this one. So in the absence of a report, I'll turn to Tommy Dunham. Please.
Yes, sir. Echo what you said, welcome to these four young ladies. They are awesome. And we've gotten, oh, then we did an interview with them as well, but they are a breath of fresh air to have around here. So they have a very bright future. We're lucky to have here. They, they keep us entertained, help me keep Michael alive. So we can see a few good things go with that.
I think you guys get so lucky.
That's right, that's right. They are, they're tremendous. Thank you all. You, you guys are doing a great job. We've had, I wouldn't say we've had an uptick in shoplifting. We've had an uptick in reporting shoplifting here lately. Wanted to thank Michael. He's done a tremendous job of follow-up on that. Their loss prevention at Kroger has really gotten a lot more active, which has kind of gotten us in tune with them. We've cleared six warrants, taken out six warrants, cleared four reports. We actively have one going, have one going up to the grand jury right now. I think Kroger's just getting active out here because they're starting to come out here a little more often because they're wearing out the other stores at the other places. But we're on top of it and their LP is really helping us out. Where in the past, they really weren't active out here. So that, that's kind of the end, the shoplifting thing. We've had zero reports of any more car hoppers out here since we had our incident a couple of weeks ago. They have been in neighboring jurisdictions quite a bit, especially out in Oldham County. Last Wednesday night and the Thursday morning, Oldham County called for assistance. They had had a similar situation to what we had out here. They rolled up on some of the folks, got behind them, and whenever they tried to make a traffic stop, they immediately took off from Oldham County. So they were just notifying us that they came through here. So they, they are still burning up Oldham County quite a bit. They hit Indian Hills and a few other places kind of around here during that time. Real quick, the Honey Creek Estates, and I know, I don't think, I see anybody here from back in there. We are making progress on the back of that, in there. Like I said, it would be slow. Technology may, and fingers crossed, may allow us to put those addresses in now. It changes every.
You're talking about Oldham County?
Yes, Yeldon County.
Tony, I'm part of that. Yeah, I'm part of the state of Honey Creek.
Yeah, and it, and it's slow rolling, but I think it's headed in the right direction. So I'm, I'm hoping to have good news here soon that we'll be able to enter those.
Great.
That, that would be great. It would be good for our residents, for sure. We have, we got about $30,000 worth of vests in through a grant for all of our officers, where they'll have new vests. We're working on getting some other equipment through that grant, but I want to thank Michael. He put in a ton of work just attending a meeting. We were able to meet some people from the AG's office and start that grant paperwork. We've got that in now. So our officer's stuff was about to expire and we saved about, yeah, most were. And we got about $30,000 worth of grants from the AG's office to do that. So that is great news, absolutely. We got our new speed cart, which was fantastic. It is set up over on Lindem. We've got it over there. We've got our other one back over in Honey Creek on Westover that's working over there, collecting data, doing quite a few things on there. In just a second, I'll have Michael go over and some of the statistics we got out of that. Just real quick, we had one car break in, not the car hoppers. It was at the country club, which happens from time to time. Vehicle was left unlocked. Usually anything that goes on at the country club, when they come out, whatever's taken out of their vehicles immediately already used credit card wise, which is, and I'll let Michael touch on that for just a second, about where we are at with that case with the credit card. If you want to touch on that real quick.
Yeah, basically, the car was left unsecured. There was a wallet inside the vehicle that had some credit cards in it. Somebody stole the wallet and immediately went over to Dixie Highway and used the credit card to buy a $9,000 watch. So we followed up on that, and that was actually within Shively's jurisdiction. We ID'd the suspect on that. But, but because it occurred in Shively, they wanted to go ahead and pursue it and take that over and take the charge out so they could get the clearance for it. So we, we went ahead and shared the case with them and they're gonna finish the prosecution on that. But everything was solved and there was no loss to the victim because they only had a credit card used. So there was inherent fraud protection with that. So there was no monetary loss to them and the suspect's going to jail.
Big, so he's in custody?
Yeah.
And Officer Shepherd rode out to Shively for that victim to try to follow that up because we thought we had a pretty good lead. And we, when we got out there, she got some really, really good cooperation with the business. That's what got us moving on that.
Excellent.
So she did a great job going out there on that. Then I'll let you talk about the speed car.
The new speed cart, we've got it out. The two signs that we have, we've onboarded those signs and tested them. It's just a matter where there was an issue with some of the mounting hardware, just like we ran into with the other signs. We've got some parts coming for that. We've got a location selected on Fox Harbor coming down the hill for one of the signs, and we're still trying to pick the best spot for the other sign. The new speed cart, the way it captures the data, that's all done on a cloud-based application. So I'm still kind of playing with that, learning how it reports. But so far, the data that we generated from that cart sitting over there is.
It's over on Wind, is it Windham?
Yeah, it's on Windham, correct. It's at 7,000 or 7020 Windham Parkway is exactly where it's set. And, but the data that we've generated with that in the last five days have been that, and it's said capturing the traffic that's going counter-attack wise. But it's captured 1,604 vehicles. And the bulk of those have been well within the speed limit. There's, the data so shows that there's basically three cars that we would have been able to stop. So everybody's pretty well behaving on that one. So I'm actually considering maybe moving it to the other side of the neighborhood or trying the opposite direction on that one. The data from the speed cart that's on Westover, we have to physically pull that one and use it on a machine-specific application. So I don't have that data yet because we haven't recovered that machine. So we will be recovering that one to go ahead and charge it up. So when the speed limit changes, we'll have both machines ready to put it the opposite ends of the speed zone.
Yep.
We've noticed that if you move it, it'll be on our side.
That's right, that's right. And that's it, that's all we have.
Okay, thank you.
All the car hoppers, Tony?
Yes.
They're still using stolen cars and does Oldham have any flock cameras?
They, they do, but they're using stolen cars.
Yeah.
They're like the one we had that was that night, it hadn't been registered since 2023. And it had, it basically had a fake, you know, plate on it.
Are the flocks helping?
They do. I mean, the fox let us know when they use those vehicles, what the, I mean, it helps us recover vehicles if we have people that have their stolen in here. That, that for sure. But as far as them coming in, they're always in a stolen vehicle. Or the one we had was unregistered for two years. So them coming in, it's an issue. But anything that's taken out of here, it does really help us because it'll hit on those flock cameras and we're able to get those, which is more important, I think, to get the vehicles back for our residents.
Tony, we all have flux on 42. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
Incoming, incoming.
Forty-four, forty-two. No, we don't. No, we don't.
With those cameras, do they, do they notify officers that a vehicle is coming in and it's a stolen vehicle?
It it does. Yeah.
Would it behoove us to do that?
To do, to do what?
Have flock cameras on on the entrances to forty-two. So we we know when a, when a
I'll answer.
Comes in.
The technology is such, we actually asked them about that. And the cameras don't work very well on four-lane roadways. The the technology's still kind of in an in an early stage, the AI and everything that collects the the data. So they don't, they don't recommend putting those on four-lane highways because it'll typically just capture one of the two lanes. So depending on which lane they're in, you may or may not capture them. So they we we actually considered those locations, but then we thought that it was better to actually that that would collect too much data and be too much to go through. So it was better to put them at the neighborhood entrances. Now, to answer your question about the 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 notification for the stolen cars, it does do that. But the bulk of the time that they come in, they've got the plate switched out to where it's a plate that won't throw a stolen, it won't trigger the stolen notification. Or it's a temporary tag that won't reflect the light and trigger the notification. Or it's a fresh stolen that's not reported yet, so it doesn't trigger the notification.
There's too many false positives or
Right, yeah, yeah. But we but we do get several, I mean, because I locked that one guy.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they had all the warrants in a pocketful of coke off.
Just to give you an example, we have, they stole a car from up in Goshen. And then we, we actually caught the car over here. They were out of the vehicle and took off. But we called the guy by the time, it wouldn't have notified us that it came through anyhow because it came in the back of Honey Creek Estates. We were able to get a hold of the owner over there. It was so, but it was fresh. So it's not been shown on the system.
Okay, thank you both.
You're welcome.
Tony, Jeff, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. And that's a second reading of ordinance fifty-three, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance establishing an ad norm tax rate for the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And I will note now that we had a public hearing at six-thirty where this meeting started to discuss the proposed tax rate. And we we all agreed that the way the compensating tax rate is reported and the way it's used is confusing.
I want to be able to explain it better.
Okay, you want to do that?
So I I looked at the formula and tried to refresh my own memory because what I've done is create a spreadsheet, so I don't have to remember this every year because it is a nightmare. But so the total assessment is higher this year. However, the compensating rate formula does not include specifically new addition properties. So the rate that the compensating rate uses is less, is a lower valuation than the current year valuation.
So so it would actually go up, notch up a tiny bit to make up?
To make up for that difference, yeah.
Okay. When will that catch up? Next year?
Well, next year would be the same case. Well, you'll use the entire assessment for this year, but then next year, whatever the net result of additions and deletions will lower that figure a little bit.
Okay, but I'm still confused because if now point one seven four and we're recommending a point one eight three, how is that four percent?
The best I can, it's a formula. And that's, I'm not sure I can explain it any better than pointing to the map. It's it's what the state has defined here. Like I say, it's, it's not four percent. It's a four percent of a certain rate that they're using in their calculations, which in this case again is I'm not going to have really coherent explanation for this other than to to walk you through the formula later.
I'll come in and I could definitely
A statute?
Yes. So this is, that's actually what the Department of Local Government gives us to make the calculation and there's three different rates that we're calculating. There's the compensating one. There's one called the substitute rate that comes into play only if the comp, if it's higher than the compensating rate.
We're confident.
And the large of our entries. Yes.
Okay.
John? The compensating, see, the compensating rate that you showed was one point seven six and it generated thirty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-two more in revenue.
Correct.
And that the eighteen point three rate generated one hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred seventy-two more in revenue. So those numbers are still accurate?
Generates a hundred and fourteen thousand seventeen dollars. Become, yes.
Okay. The, I went back and looked at some of the numbers and compared them to twenty twenty-two, twenty-two, this year. And and what I've seen is taxes have gone up about six hundred and seventy-two thousand or about twenty-two percent. And what I'm looking at is two taxes, one property tax and the other, the other is the insurance tax. And and the property tax wasn't too bad. From twenty-two, twenty-three, it went up a hundred and eighty-two thousand. But the insurance tax went up five hundred thousand. And and it just seems to me that that we we've, we're taxing, we're taxing our residents pretty well. And and I'm wondering if if we need to amend and rather than going to the one point eight three, go to the one point seven six to compensate.
I couldn't hear your statements.
What part?
The last part.
Last part.
Just the last.
Adopting compensating person.
I I I'm suggesting that that given the six hundred, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars increase in taxes from twenty twenty-two to this year, half a million of that's insurance tax and about a hundred and eighty-two thousand is is thereabouts is the property tax. And it strikes me that we're, we're taxing our residents pretty heavily, particularly in insurance taxes. And that kind of comes through a little bit, doesn't jump out at you. Your insurance, your insurance goes up in that damn insurance company. But but guess what? We got a lawyer in one of there too, half a million. And and I really don't know how that's going to go. It it, I know we're at seven percent, but as insurance rates go up, we're really benefiting. And I'm suggesting, should we amend the budget to go back to the compensating rate? Given, given the increase of taxes versus the one eight three.
We're, we're having this discussion on on a motion that hasn't been made. So I'm going to ask if there's a motion to give a second reading, ordinance six fifty-three, series twenty twenty-five.
So me, second.
Mr. Holmes, I have the motion. Mr. Clark seconded the motion. Is there, and Don's already provided some good discussion. Is there further discussion?
Well, I think during that period, Don, talking about there's significant inflation, so our expenses also went up during that period. I think that's, that's a factor.
Are you suggesting?
Wait a minute.
Are you suggesting?
Hold on. We've, we've heard from you already. We're going to hear from you again, but are there other, is there other discussion from other members of the council? Okay, Don?
Again, a twenty-two percent increase in taxes, I don't think inflation's gone up that much in in the past three years.
We had nine percent for two years.
No. The Fed said inflation would have two point five percent in the past year. It was like three percent the previous year, like four percent before that.
I remember social security would have nine percent. And that's banned.
In twenty twenty-one.
So we'll hold on, hold on, everybody. We're going to go one at a time. And right, right now, seeing what, what a comment on the, on the motion that's on the floor. Any other discussion? Okay, are we ready for a vote?
What are we voting on?
We're voting on a second reading for ordinance six fifty-three, twenty twenty-five, adopting the tax rate. That's the, that's the motion that's on the floor. It's been seconded. We've had discussion. So I'll ask for for the vote on that. Sandra?
No.
Okay, John?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Evans?
Yes.
Don Gibson?
No.
Okay, so that
Christian.
Oh, Christian, I'm sorry.
No, just from what I said last time and what you, I agree with Don and Sandra.
Okay, so Chris, so so my math calculation is the vote three to three.
Yes.
In that case, I'll cast the vote, I'll vote in favor of the motion for the second reading. And I'll ask, so it's adopted by a vote, I guess it's four to three. And John Clark, would you give, David Holmes, would you give the second reading?
City of Prospect ordinance number six fifty-three, series twenty twenty-five, ordinance establishing an ad norm tax rate for the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. And that's now been approved and we'll move on to the next item, which is in new business. And that's the first reading of ordinance six fifty-four, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance establishing the budget for the general fund, municipal road aid fund and capital project funds for the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And those materials, the, the new version of that ordinance has been circulated, as I mentioned earlier, with Chris Borman's good advice, which I think was accurate. This is up for a first reading this time. We had a first reading of a previous version of the budget at the June two meeting. But Chris believes that the changes are substantial enough that we need to have a new first reading. So with that, with those preparatory remarks, is there a motion to approve the budget that's been presented?
So move second.
Okay, Mayor Evans made that motion. John Clark seconded. Is there discussion? Okay, it's in the absence of discussion, are we ready for a vote? I'll ask for the yeas and nays. I'm going to, I'll start with you, Christian. So don't forget you.
But yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, so that's a vote in favor of the, of the budget ordinance, Don Gibson?
No.
Okay, John Evans?
Yes.
David Holmes?
Yes.
John Clark?
Yes.
And Sandra Leonard?
Yes.
Okay, so that is approved by a vote, I believe, by the one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we need the readings. We need the first reading. So that would be, I can't remember who makes the statements. John Evans, John, would you?
I'm afraid you're going to do that.
Where is it? Right here.
Ordinance six fifty-four, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance establishing the budget for the general fund, municipal road aid and capital project funds for the city of Prospect for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, John. So that's received first reading. I will call a special meeting. We'll circulate some dates for consideration of second reading and and possible approval of the budget that we received the first reading this evening. That is the last item on the agenda. So after last June second meeting, which went long, this meeting's not going long. But is there further business to come before the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? We are adjourned. That's everyone. Thank you, Christian. Safe travels to you.
Yes. All right. See you soon. Bye.
Thank you. So and then everyone, I encourage you to take a moment and say hello to our, our scholars who are here with us this evening.